All right, I'm going to follow this news a little before everybody starts getting comfortable. Yeah. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. It's on. The Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and the United Republic stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Do you want to reference a teacher that just passed away? That worked at this school for many years, I think over 35. Three people on the school committee. Pat, yeah, I'm sure. I know, I did. Roger O'Leary, Mr. O. He taught algebra, I think French. Wonderful guy, really dedicated to his craft, taught me math. This is one of the people that worked here that made a difference in K1. I don't have his, all his stuff that he did, I meant to get that today, but I got a little busy. But a wonderful man. If you guys have any stories on Mr. O'Leary.
He was fifth grade.
Fifth grade, fifth grade math. He was a wonderful, wonderful man. All right, thanks. Consent agenda. Anyone pulling anything out? Consider a motion to approve consent agenda.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor? Who's our spring track coach?
Kalina Harris.
Who?
Kalina Harris.
No, track is... Track coach.
Jennifer.
The cross coach is, there's an S on here.
I'm not sure that we are actually appointing the boys. But I think it's just the girls. So I think it's just the girls that's being appointed.
So we have an opening for the men, for the boys. All right, so we're going to spotlight an exit achieve 3000 presentation. This is a, something that we have in the school that we spend a lot of money on. Every year.
This is Leslie Cameron. She's from Achieve 3000. She's the Regional Sales, Regional Sales Director. Is that, yes? So at the meeting last time, when you asked me if I could come, I did. And she was graciously available this evening to come down and talk to us. Gabby Sullivan and I did meeting her to review our data and just to talk about how things are going at Rover. And she has prepared, I believe you have a copy of the slideshow with your parents. So she's prepared to provide us with the presentation and answer your questions.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I'm really glad to be here. And I actually have somebody on a Zoom meeting with me as well. So I work with our partner districts here in Rhode Island, support your efforts. I also have Judy Thumbhorst online. She is our Regional Vice President for Professional Services and Professional Development. Judy, can you hear us? Uh-oh. You might, you might be on mute.
It's a good meeting now, how it's cool. Especially if you jump out.
I should, I can hear you. Hold on. That's what we do here, catch, hold on.
I think they should.
Oh, it went, oh, we switched, sorry.
I think they should. I think they're telling.
All right, Judy, can you hear us?
What?
Can you hear me? Yeah. Jonathan, is there room to move forward?
Um, just right on screen.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. That's okay. I can do it here.
Huh?
There's all sorts of things we have. There's all sorts of things we have.
I know what you're...
Okay.
Does the hour on your keyboard work?
Technology experience.
Breathe that food down for the people. You did get it on. She breathe?
Well, when the principal reached out and we had a conversation, which we do quite regularly with the partner, Gabby and your team here in the building, in terms of best practices and implementation plan, we have some very constructive and some hard conversations too, right? So we're very realistically looking at data around your implementation of the achievement process. And really, this is, this is our mission as a company. We've been around for 18 years. We are out of Red Bank, New Jersey. And our goal is to help all students accelerate their literacy. We meet them where they stand and we really help to get them college and career ready. So every day, that's what we're thinking about. And in our partnership here, we've had some really good results, so that we're going to share with each to know. Cop some of this up. We share this because when we look at students, the first thing that we try to figure out really accurately is what is your comfortable reading level? Where are you able to dig deeply and comprehend and really get that acceleration while we're running? And we do that through what's called a Lexile level. So we know that when we look at any group of students in classrooms and support rooms, that we have a range of reading levels. And the L stands for Lexile in this case. And we know not only are students at different reading levels, but also have a different set of needs in many cases. We may have students that are intervention students and are reading far below their grade level. We have students with individualized learning clients and special education, with English language learners. So not only do we look and identify at how we need a student at their comfortable accurate reading level, but also where are the students that may need additional help, which we do very well in terms of scaffolding their experience in the platform and differentiating what we're, what we're really interacting with them on. So that's, that's the first thing that I definitely wanted to share. The way that we do this, we actually have an algorithm that runs our program. And our research base is very deep. We do a national Lexile study, which we look at 1.3 million students every year. And the way that we get the acceleration for our students within the Achieve 3000 literacy program is through this process. It's called the five-step literacy routine. The first step that we take with our students is accurately identifying reading level. And through a partnership with a group called Metometrics, which is the founders of the National Lexile Leveling System that's used. And when I talk about Lexile, I'm not only talking about being able to say, what is your Lexile as a good reader comfortably, but we also Lexile reading materials. So that's where the power happens, because we're able to identify Lexile level with students, and then we're able to match them up with the Just Write Lexile level of the content. So with our partnership with Metometrics, we created what's called the Level Set Assessment. So the first time students log into the system, they are taking the Level Set Assessment, and that is telling us accurately where they stand in terms of Lexile reading level. Once that happens and we get that baseline for students, they will write into differentiated, high-interest content at that Just Write Lexile level. And they're working through that five-step literacy routine. So we do that, and in the middle of that, in step three, we have an embedded assessment called an activity. The activity is eight multiple choice questions. And the goal of that is to not stop the instructional process, but to be able to embed that to see are students moving forward? Are we giving the acceleration that we need? From there, in our platform, I'll adjust for every student every month. As they're working through their Lexile, each week, as they're taking that embedded assessment in step three, all of that data is gathered for every student, and the algorithm gets to know each of the students month by month. So at the end of every month, the algorithm is saying, we're going to adjust you up based on your mastery level, we're going to keep you the same based on where you stand, or in some cases, we're going to drop you down for next month. So the important part to that is that for many situations in instruction, we have to wait periods or chunks of instructional time to figure out, well, how are we doing, right? We have to wait to give a formal assessment. With this type of process, we know, and teachers know every day in the classroom, where students stand. And that helps when we think in terms of grouping students, which students need aggressive intervention, where we need to intervene on any given day. So when we talk about data to drive instruction, having a really good view in a daily way for our students is very important. And that way, we're not wasting time, we're not having those waiting periods where we're like, well, let's see, how did the last three months go? And if the answer is not great, you know, we've lost some time and lost some ground, especially with our students who really need to accelerate to get to level. So with that being said, that ongoing acceleration happens with our students because we have a clear view of where we stand with them and what we need to do, and what the, really that master plan is for each student. The other thing that we talk about a lot is college and career readiness, right? So when we think in terms of reading level and Lexile level, we actually have a way to map that out with our data within the platform. So we can see where do we start with our students, by grade, by class, and then individual students, and then where are we as we get towards mid-year at this time of year, and then where are we at the end of the school year? So being able to have very accurate data for students, not only around reading level, but also college and career, is a very important way to know are we being successful with students? And we always have an eye on that as well. So I mentioned the fact that we meet everybody at their Just Write comfortable reading level, right? So we're able to dig deeply, we're able to really get that acceleration process started. But the other piece to this is being able to differentiate for students. So being able to present students with content that's comfortable, but also to have those extra little pieces that may really accelerate and activate learning. For a student who's three or more reading levels below where they should be in terms of grade level, it may be that these steps are called out for them. Or when they first log in for their assignment, the vocabulary pops up and is read to them. So having all of those pieces based on the type of identified learner is very important in terms of accelerating all of our students as we work with them. And teachers have a good view on this and are able to adjust the path those students and adjust these types of tools. And it includes speech to text, digital annotation tool within the program, and really some good supports around the writing process for our students. So being around for 18 years, right? We have seen a lot, we've pushed out a lot of content. And one of the important things that we did about two years ago is we really tipped our company on its side in terms of transforming what we do. We know that we've got a great algorithm, the platform runs very well, we have a keen eye on accurate data every day for students, but we really were trying to focus on student engagement. And that really comes down to contact. Where is that hook or handle that a student holds onto to all of their learning? And so what we did about 18 months ago is we went out and surveyed about 130,000 students that work in the platform, and we asked them questions like, what do you like to read? What are you currently reading in Achieve 3000 Literacy? Do you like it? And when I talk about Lexile levels, when we have a high-interest article that we write, say on the Australian wildfires, we have authors that are writing. It's not a computer that's doing it. We have authors that are in Red Bank as a labor law, really trying to write good content at each of 12 Lexile levels in English and eight in Spanish. So with that being said, when we got the survey back and our authorship team took a look at the responses, some of the responses were pretty heartbreaking, because it was like, no, I don't really like what I'm reading. And a lot of what, when we talk about Lexile levels in reading, it's really tied to nonfiction informational tasks. And that style of writing, when you think of AP News, kind of that dryer style of writing, academic textbook writing, it can be dry. So what we did is really put ourselves on a mission to say, how can we change that up? And we did that over a period of the last 18 months. We've doubled our content, we've now quadrupled our content, but more importantly, we've switched out this style of writing. So we had a lot of conversations about how do we instill a sense of humor? What are the topics that maybe we're missing out on that we really need to quickly be able to push out? So when somebody jumps in and a teacher says, hey, you know, we're talking about the wildfires because they're happening, is we, they're able to have content that they can push out for? So the good news is that we've got a lot of interesting content conversations going on and really starting to see an uptick in the last school year in student engagement. And that's, that's really important. We've also really tied into, when you think in terms of science and social studies content, making it easy for teachers to have good cutting-edge content that they can encourage collaboration within the classroom. And again, that we can track students and have conversations at Just Write Lexile level, but also have conversations at grade level in the direct instruction model. So we're really excited about the one, the newer work that we're doing. And as we start thinking towards next school year, we have a whole, whole bunch of other things that we'll, we'll take a look at as well. I quickly mentioned the National Lexile Study. We do that in conjunction with the Successful Practices Network. So we look at over 1.3 billion students every school year, we look at the student subpopulations. And this is where we are able to see that when students actually use our program and that five-step literacy routine at least once a week, and that step three embedded assessment, we want them to get a 75% or better on their first try score with the Riaopa, right? Because it's not, it's not a trick test, it's really an open book test, an opportunity for close reading, digging that second or third time into text and answering questions. But we know when that happens, we get up to three and a half time gain in a school year. And that's what we're excited about. And that's not just with one subpopulation of students, that's, that's across the board. And the interesting thing is the students that are struggling the most are the places where we see even greater gains. And that, that's a great conversation to be able to have with, with parents and as students are moving into their next grade level. So wanted to share that, definitely have, have that full study for you if you have any bits of research that you have. So when we think in terms of fidelity, I mentioned that, you know, we partner here, we, we do classroom coaching, we have our professional services managers that have conversations with Gabby and with our classroom teachers to see what do we need to do to empower the experience for students? Are we sticking to best practices throughout the school day? And this is really what it comes down to, the quantity of work in Achieve 3000 and the quality. So are students reading enough and doing that five-step literacy routine at least once a week? And are we helping them get towards that 75% or better on the first try score with test-taking strategies, with opportunities for them to really dig, dig deeply? So that's really what we focus on. And when we think of our highest fidelity students, we know that we can get amazing Lexile growth. When you think of a student's Lexile gain in a school year, it's about 60 Lexile points. So what we're looking at is how do we get the way past that? How do we really help them to, to move quickly and to dig deeply in content? So we think about science and social studies content. All right, so the other thing I did want to share with you, because I think it's really important when you have community conversations about, well, why are we using Achieve 3000? What's the research base, like our National Lexile Study? But also, when you think in terms of evidence for ESSA, which is another great place to take a peek and see what is rated strongly. And we're actually only one of two companies that has a strong rating through evidence for ESSA. And we also have, I love What Works Clearinghouse, it's kind of the Yelp for education, right? We can get on and see what's, what's rated well. And we have a very strong rating on What Works Clearinghouse as well. So these are the kinds of things that we're always happy to share, because we're excited about the work that we're doing. All right, so Judy, I'm going to hand things over to you to talk a little bit about implementation, and I'm going to take a look at some of your data, because I want you to see what's been going on behind the scenes. Can you?
Okay, terrific. Can anyone continue your name?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Sorry.
Okay. No, that's okay, that's terrific. So I just want to go through first a little bit of the implementation goals that were set in the beginning of the school year. I'm not going to read it word by word, I'm just going to kind of summarize a little. But it was set up between our professional services director, Ramona, and your team, Sonja, and Gabby. And it was, the goals are to be set for the beginning of the year, where we want the implementation to go. What is it exactly we're looking to do? And the teachers in grades five to eight are pretty targeted, and we're hoping to increase access to high-quality nonfiction reading, and that will increase Lexile scores in ELA, Social Studies, and Science School. They'll also increase effective implementation of blending learning model in the special education classroom. And also, students in grades five to eight, the goal is for them to complete a minimum of 40 activities, which that comes down to one activity a week. And then we're going to be doing that in ELA, and then switch on in Rockford in the province of Social Studies. And as Leslie had said before, the goal is for the, to have the, to get the highest fidelity, would be the 40 activities, and strive to score 75% on their first try score with your multiple choice questions. And we want them to be able to monitor their own growth using our resources as well. The other thing I just want to add in there is the 40 activities, which is one lesson if they do one lesson per week, that's minimum. We definitely can have them doing more than that, but we don't want to lose the impact of, of the fidelity. And we really want them to have an equal partnership between their activities and their, and the first try score. And we also wanted to make sure that these implementation goals, that everybody had a role. The leadership, the students, and the teachers, they all had their action step throughout this whole process. When we met, Leslie and I met a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was now, at the school, we looked at where the data showed where we were with our implementation at the school level. And we discussed, is, you know, is this where we thought we were going to be? Is this where we want to be? What can we do to support you at the school level and get you further along with the goal? You don't feel like you're there, you know, enough? And we did, we kind of just talked through all of that. And you'll see that as we get into some of the data slides. But I also, you know, I'm going to understand that we set these implementation goals up with you. And the end goal is for all of the students just to have the best literacy gains that we know that they can have for using our program with fidelity and using it in the classroom. So we're going to look at some of the data, and just want to let you know, this is a real high, like a high-level look at it. We're not going to dig down deep, but the school, parent control, the teachers, the apps, they do have that in those rooms. So the first slide here that we're, we're looking at is called a comparison chart. And we're looking at the activities per week versus the average score, because we know that when students are using the program with fidelity and getting one good lesson in a week, then they're going to see the results of the first try score. So honestly, I look at this and I think this is fantastic results and fantastic data to see, because I can see that in fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, if you're looking at the second bar, the average score, they are all just on the verge of 75%. Now, that is the total number for the classroom. So in fifth grade, where they're completing one full article a week, and the average is 73.9%, that's the average score. Students are getting 75, 80, maybe some students are getting 60, but that's, that's showing you the average. And the fact that that average across the board is just about 75%, what, what we're striving for, is just, that's amazing. Just so you know, the national average for first try, for, for the score, for grades three to eight is 58% already. Your, your students are well above. And what you can see here as well, grade five, they're at that one activity a week, which is fantastic. The other three grades need a little bit more of a boost to try to have them complete that activity in the week. They're getting some of it in, not the whole activity. And as you can see, the scores for the first try score is so, so close that I am 100% certain of that. If we just inch up that, that activities a little bit to get to that one activity a week, that, that average score is going to, it's just going to fly and we're going to see like crazy literacy gains with those, you know, three classes in six, seven, eight grades. I also want, just to make, that's something you can switch, Leslie, I just want to make it clear, this data that I pulled is from the leadership edition, and, you know, the school leadership, the principal, and I, not the teachers, but I believe the literacy coach, all have access to our leadership edition, but the, the teachers have access to the teachers' edition. And this type of data is in there for their individual students as well. So this, and this is also data that was pulled based on the beginning of the school year up to January 1st. So this next slide is showing that the students scored 75% or higher on the first try. It's telling you here that in every single class, just about every student at some point had 75% or higher on the first try. I mean, it looks like maybe in fifth and sixth grade, one student did it, but across the board, we know these students can do it. They can read that article, walk through all the activities with their, with their teacher and their staff, sit down, answer those questions, and understand, comprehend, and be able to get 75% higher on the, or higher on the first try, which is, is fantastic. Does anybody have any questions before I move on to, I don't want to be looking at these too quickly unless anyone has questions?
I don't think so, not yet.
I think we're good.
Okay, terrific. All right, so this slide is actually showing you what the Lexile performance looks like overall for this school. So in the first slide, in the first paragraph here, the pre-test and current Lexile level overall. So it's showing that there was an average Lexile from the pre-test of 872, and now they're at 906. And that again is across the board for the school. So the next column, it shows what the expected growth is at this time and where the school is at. The expected growth was 24 Lexiles. And as you can see, we've already done surpassed that, they're 34 Lexiles, which is great. I'm guessing they could do even better. I think we could double or triple that. I'm, I'm very certain of that. But just the fact that they've already surpassed that Lexile that was expected is just fantastic. And it is broken down a little bit on the bottom here, so that you can see the actual Lexile growth across the grade. So as you can see, the, the fifth grade class, their total average growth was 51. In sixth grade, it was 36. In seventh grade, it was 20. And in eighth grade, it was 26. And we, we are likely to see the biggest gain in fifth grade. Honestly, students even in the lower grades have even, you know, bigger gains. And as you get older, that gap closes a little, so your gains aren't going to be as gigantic. And again, this is just another way to show, but this is showing you per grade, I told you, I, you know, I did say where, what their increase was. This is what was expected, broken down until for fifth grade, 33, and they got to, they're already at 51 Lexile gain. Sixth grade was the expected Lexile growth at this time is 27, and they're at 36. Seventh grade is actually even right now. They, they made additional gains, but they're where they need to be. Like this is where they are okay to be. We want them to get higher. And then for eighth grade, they were at 16 Lexile, and they got to 26 at this time. So growth across the board. And I would like to look at this as well. It's a little snapshot to show the change over the months. And it's, you know, it's pretty clear for here, just looking at the percentages of first try scores and the average activities per week, pretty consistent. Sometimes, you know, you get a slower start, but this school, they're pretty consistent in their routine, which is fantastic, because as you can see, we've already seen results. And if they continue to stay consistent, and they just try to inch up that activity to really make sure we get one full activity in a week, the gains for just for Lexile are going to continue to triple, I just feel involved. are going to continue to triple, I just feel that way. So this is what we sat down, I walked, we talked to the staff about when we met, then Leslie and I. And just where are you at your implementation right now? Where do we see, where do you need to go? Where can we continue to support you? And so we did, we talked a little bit about just where the students are in the activities during the week, how, what classrooms they're getting to use it in. We were able to dig down a little bit deeper and look and see which, you know, specific teachers they're using in the classroom, who's getting in the full, the full article, who's, you know, taking a little bit longer. And we kind of put together a little game plan. And we were having Ramona, who is the professional services director, she deals with the school principal and the teachers, just to ensure that we're all continuing to move in that direction.
Thank you, Judy.
Yeah, we're good. I think we're good, all right. Any questions on data? That was kind of a whirlwind, but we did, we do have the slide deck for you. And the good news is with the Leadership Edition and the teacher data side, we've all got hands on this data. And we're having those outgoing conversations and we're having some good opportunity to see how do we tweak what we're doing as we progress through the school year. We have some really exciting areas that we're working on for next school year.
May I just ask a question about data, please? I'm not sure if you're aware, but this program coincides with a decrease in state testing scores for this school. Your data doesn't really seem to account for that. And I'm wondering if you have any thoughts to, that might possibly account for that?
Interesting. Well, I think, you know, what we track accurately would be against Lexile improvement or Lexile acceleration. So when you're looking at then applying that to state testing, I think you have students that are doing a better job in terms of what they're able to do with reading and comprehension. I don't really know how that's translating in terms of the state testing, but that's definitely something that we could take a look at, your state test results, and really try to cross it or correlate that to these students. So being able to take a student's test results on the state test, being able to take what has happened in the Chief 3000 and look at that correlation, we're happy to do that work with you and see if that gives a more clearer answer in terms of what you're seeing in terms of test scores dropping. Judy, do you have anything else to add for that?
No, Leslie, I think what you said is correct. You really need to be able to look at the results for both. I'm curious to see, you know, if it's all grades, if it was a specific grade. We also could do our year over year and look where we have our margin of error data as well.
Absolutely.
I have sort of some more questions. I was wondering if you're also looking at the students' grades in the LA and if we're seeing that their grades in the classroom are increasing or what's happening in the school's special work environment?
Interesting. I think I would defer to you all in terms of grades, teacher assigned grades versus for more.
I can just speak to a little bit of what both of you are asking. So when the students get the test at the end of the school year, they are being tested on that grade levels text ability. Okay, so at the end of the school year, for the third grade, you're taking end of school year third grade test. If that student isn't where they're supposed to be, it's already going to be a challenge for them to begin with. So we have the readability. And actually, when we looked at it recently, we've noticed that the, I think the students are doing really well in the reading section. It is the right that we are still working on. And when I did our benchmark system and things like that. As opposed to like talking about the correlation with their school, their grades, it's really hard to find things that every, you know, when you're differentiating within a classroom, to find something that every student will be able to use at their own lesson, at their own Lexile level. The teacher can push out things that go with their curriculum through this program, and the teacher, like, and the students can also go and do their own interest level choice, you know, pre-choice if they would like. So it's nice because the kids are going in at their own level, but then we can have, we have the ability to do like a stretch article with that, or we have the ability to, you know, if we see kids, you know, making progress in their reading, giving them that challenge, pushing them a little bit harder to get to, you know, closer to their grade level for readability. So, I mean, it's a nice way to look at things. It's, we still have, you know, other things, we look at their classroom performance. We, I know we do this all the time, but this is, you know, something you have to keep everything, you know, check the balances, you know, the reading, the writing, the classroom performance, you have, you know, I read that we also do within the school year. So it is a lot that we look at, but I feel like we've started to have more, like with having G's, having I read, having things that we can, you know, keep an eye on everything and making sure where kids are. And, I mean, it's easy to have this because finding all the books and all the materials for, you know, each student at their own level, if that's the challenging part, so. I mean, we'll sit in there, but I think this is a school.
This is our fourth year.
And we do push for it just to go in, especially the once a week, 75 or above. And, you know, if they don't, they actually are challenging themselves to go in, try again, do another one, do a full-length article and try to get that 75 or above, so. And I think, sorry, this was implemented when they weren't different, so it is, I mean, I can see that's why the, it's a less of a gain at that point.
Ms. Sullivan brings up an interesting point. Missing from your slides is what the Lexile level should be per grade. You tell us what it is effectively for Little Compton, but you don't mention necessarily whether or not 872 is where one would be expected to be.
One of our slides that we can look at, it's pretty short, I know I can sum up the Leadership Edition, but we do have this, have the college and career writing, so we, and we look, right, I can do this all the time. We go back to this all the time. Like if you're sitting in a fifth grade classroom, all right, so it goes right across the board. So we know where your's supposed to be. And obviously too, like you could come into fifth grade being unapproached, and we want you on that meet succeed end. So we're constantly watching to see where our kids are falling. A Chief 3000 has the writing component, but it's not scored. It's a different entity in the classroom. The teachers can use that piece and they can grade it themselves. It goes with the article they read, and usually, I mean, I think the kids do well when you do those, but we're really using this room, we're using really good Lexile and making sure our students are where they're supposed to be. We have, we, I use this file, I just, this data all the time, just to make sure, you know, when we do P L Ps, we make sure the kids are making the gains they're supposed to be making. And this is one way to make sure. So I mean, we could write down, you know, each by class, but this is like the look of it, but it needs to be. Personal learning potential. So if someone's reading below grade level, hang on, what grade they're in, if you're slightly below in anywhere up to grade five, you would be on a P L P. And if you were about a year behind in grade six, seven, or eight of your readings, you would also be on a P L P. So if you, fifth grade has the highest gains that they would have to make, there's more levels still of reading. Once you're in that seventh grade readability, you're more so, you're inferencing, you're analyzing, analyzing your text, and you're going to be a deeper thinker and leader at that point.
So, thank you for that. How many teachers use Chief 3000? Everyone?
Five to eight. So it's fifth grade and.
Five through eight.
So I feel like so, I mean, it's going to go up to three because, like, they have a downtime if they finish something. It's like automatic, you're supposed to take other team and do it. And that's why you're taking more, but.
So how many, ten? Nine?
Yes, they can do it if they need it.
And you're one of the ten. Right?
Yep.
And I would imagine you, you think the Chief 3000 is successful in this school?
I feel like we, with the four years we've used it, we've gotten a little bit better a year. We, you know, we're trying to use it and use it for what we need it for, to keep an eye on our students.
Sonny, how about your other nine teachers? Are they, are they supportive of Chief 3000?
I think pretty, I think pretty much everybody is. And I think that every year, as the Chief has brought on more tools and things that we can relate to, we can very much get down to a level of where they're falling apart now. So I'm, at our P L C meetings, our professional community meetings, teachers will talk about, you know, what they can do with the Chief and how they can use different pieces of data to get the results they want. So I think we're really trying to narrow, you know, kind of hone in on where our weaknesses were so that we can improve our test scores.
So I'm slightly skeptical about Chief 3000. I don't have any letters after my name. I don't write curriculum. So, but my kids went through here and so, you know, I just think the Chief 3000 is trying to do a hard thing. I don't think it's easy, you know, to get that constant, it seems like a constant battle with the Chief to keep up their content that's relative and, you know, current and interesting to students. I think that's a hard thing to do. And I think you folks probably come to realize that from everything you just said, and what you, you know, you're the authors and you're trying to keep it up and the wildfire. That's an ongoing battle, you know, to do. So I'm a little skeptical of that. I'm a little skeptical about how it helps every student. I, you know, does it help the kids that are poor readers, or the kids that are middle readers, or the kids that are really good, they're just going to blow through this? You know, is it helping everybody? You know, so I'm skeptical about that. I just think it's a hard, it's, I think your company is trying to do a really hard thing. It's not easy. And my other thing is, you know, I think writing's very important. You know, I don't see any writing component in a G 3000. It's not supposed to be one. It's literacy, so I understand that. You know, and we have a, you know, Spanish too, I think is important. We send our kids to high school and they're constantly clamoring for writing and Spanish. I don't hear about reading so much, but obviously, reading's extremely important. We all know that. Kids should be reading. How much of the percentage of the student's grade is achieved?
We don't use it as for grade. We used to use it for the writing component. So on the five-step process that you saw, there is one piece where after you've read and you've done the quiz, it's the activity. You, there's a writing component that goes with it, sometimes it's eliminated, because the students are supposed to do the same things, who would do on anything, you know, answer the question, put some quotes in, or pull their, their information from the text. We did that when we first started with this, I felt like we were pushing that more and we were reading it, but, I mean, more things have come from the program too since then. I mean, they just added fiction to theirs this year. Kids have been liking that this year. I mean, there's just new things that have come up in the last couple of years.
I appreciate the conversation. I know I learned a lot. Any other questions? You've got hands, you've got, we'll go right here first.
Did we use to grade it? Because I seem to remember not so long ago hearing that kids were getting graded on it. Or get, not high stakes, but that there was a grade associated with, we used to read graded in the first year.
And I would say it's used a little bit differently in each class. For some teachers, if they're doing a social studies unit and they're using a social studies article that relates directly to content, there may be a component of that that's used as a grade, but not something that's necessarily just an Chief 3000. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And then my other question is, so I have seen a Chief 3000, or do you have similar products? I think there was a high school product my daughter used. It was something 3000, I don't think it was.
Yeah, it was, it was. And I, I think they didn't have graded.
Yeah, so she's a struggling reader. She did really well, but also with other supports. So I heard you talk about kids with P L Ps do well. Are there other supports for those kids with P L Ps, or is it just this?
Oh, no, it's not just this. This is just a way to make sure we can give, you know, because it's like your Lexile, you're, so basically, you know, kids go in, if the teacher's pushing out an article that's content related to social studies science, every student in your class is going to have that same article that's going to look at their level. So they're reading the same thing. You know, if you're on a lower Lexile, you know, you're going to see less to your article, obviously. If you're on higher and you're pushed, you're going to see more. Everyone should be able to, if it's one of you wants to have the dig deeper, you can have a stretch article that gets you a little bit more because sometimes you won't count enough potatoes, if you will, to get, you know. So it's really cool because you're pushing up the content, but then the kids will get their level. And then they see that quiz, and that quiz is based on that readability, so all the quizzes are going to look different. And, but they're going to be, you know, based on your Lexile. And then, so the teacher's able to monitor things like that while getting the same content. So sometimes he leaves it in science to, you know, introduce something new. So yeah, maybe three years ago, that past three years ago started the same as a class this time, but that's not old because it's two or curriculum, you know? But then like the new interest articles would be, you know, sometimes the kids pop up, they pop up on the little screen thing, and the kids are like, okay, we need this. And, you know, it's a free choice there, yeah, that's fine.
Read it, I'm sorry, read it.
I'm sorry, one more. So I, I believe only my struggling reader used the Chief. So, but I have heard from some other families that have very good readers in their family that they feel like if their Lexile is high, it's much more difficult or than almost unfair.
Right. And I've heard that too. That's, that's a tricky one, only because it's the higher end. And what ends up happening is the vocab, it's vocabulary behind. So sometimes they're not able to figure out what the words mean in the context of the sentence. And I, so we don't use it as a grade, but we're making sure we're getting to students' and their abilities. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's, you know, I mean, there are still, some of the kids are in sixth grade reading at the highest, one of the highest levels. And, you know, it's hard, but they're, they're working through it. They work through it. It is challenging for those. And then for the lower, it's not the only thing we use for P L Ps, but it's a great way to have a lot more variety and choice to, it's really hard to give students a novel and they're reading this whole novel. This is easier for them to get, you know what I mean? To their point, to their level, but it's quicker for them so we can keep monitoring those things.
Well, Gabby, you mentioned fiction as well.
Yeah, that's why.
When we talk about Lexile levels, that's really around mapping out nonfiction informational text, right? So for like the last 15 years, we've had this ongoing conversation of how could we just write Lexile level fiction? You can't take Charlotte's Web and slice and dice it into 12 Lexile levels with any impact. So for this school year, what we did, we hired a whole other crew of children and young adult fiction writers. And what we're doing is serialized fiction. So when you think in terms of like the old school cliffhanger, what happened to Joe? You know, you read the article for the day and you're like, oh my gosh, I have to wait till tomorrow to find out what happened to Joe and the dog. So those types of articles are going to give us the opportunity to make fiction and literature accessible for students, right? Because then they can start practicing and understanding literary elements that we, in a lot of cases, they're out of reach for those students because they're being handed a novel or a story that is way above where they stand. So we're excited about that. And we also, we launched that for September. We just rolled that data because there being, there's an activity where they get tested on the literature. That data's starting to roll into the algorithm now. So we're literally going to be able to look at how students are doing in fiction as well as nonfiction. And I think that's going to be another very interesting strategic data conversation that we can have for teachers and students. And I appreciate what you're saying. It is, it's a challenge for us to write quickly, accurately, have things, but, you know, I have to tell you, we have quadrupled the amount of content. And I think what happens sometimes, and you mentioned it, Gabby, that teachers will push out something specifically, say in science or social studies, that isn't a quote-unquote current events article. It's more of a topic that we're doing, something on introducing cell division. And then maybe you see it a year later because it's not something that just happened. It's more tied to standards, which we also map to. So I think there's a couple of things sometimes that go on in the platform. Student choices have been a piece to it. And what we've done is because that five-step literacy routine takes time, we've also created what's called Article Plus Activity, which is just a high-interest article and now activity where we have the embedded assessment. So when we talk about student choice, when students are seeing on their panel what's popping up, they're seeing something, they're like, oh, wait, I want to read about that. And for back to school, we are launching student channels. So when you think in terms of YouTube, if I love repairing lawn mowers and I follow the lawn mower, lawn mower repair channel and watch everything I can get my hands on, we're going to start curating by channel and students can join a channel. So if I eat, live, and read soccer, then I can be a part of the soccer channel. And to me, the data from that is also going to be interesting because we can start tracking what is the hook that's most interesting for students? What are the channels that are the most active? And then what does that translate into literacy acceleration when students start using those types of channels?
Leslie, I'm really thankful for your presentation. I'm actually quite impressed with the program. I don't have children who went, used it. However, I am impressed with the content development, the way you're linking the child's needs and interests to your content. And the data's overwhelming. I mean, you have access, the school has access to some incredible data. I'm wondering if there still remains a gap between the data which teachers and faculty have access to and their use of it, and their actual specific motivation of each student, getting them where they are, and specifically helping them. But the data and the content is there. And so I have a question. Your colleague on the phone said that we could surpass our Lexile growth. How are we going to do that?
Well, see, just from the teacher end of it.
You don't have to answer it here, and we probably don't have to go through it tonight, but could you, could you take that back and think about it? Because we'd love to see that Lexile growth, and I think we'd see some other test scores improved. So I don't answer it, but keep working. And I, I am impressed. So I, don't answer it, but keep working, and I, I am impressed with the system, and I thank you very much for your presentation.
Is there any more? Is there a crochet woman?
Yeah. Um, so I, I do appreciate having people in my life in trouble to read, and people who were the troublemakers in school, because they were bored, because they were way far ahead. The fact that it's challenging, I think, is good, because you're not losing...
Right.
Um, but I was interested if, um, you know, we talked about looking at the, um, the grade aspect, are these, you know, as people are increasing their lexile through, um, this program, how are their writing skills increasing? Because, you know, they say like, if you want to learn to write better, you need to read. And so seeing how those people reinforce each other would be really interesting with the data.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. Well, we do a lot of work within the writing process with, um, Dr. Doug Fisher and Carolyn Tomlinson, and the thought behind writing is that you help students to differentiate the product that you're asking them to create based on the reading level. So supporting their efforts, having a, a guiding light, because of course, struggling readers are struggling writers, so they get that line screen in front of them, and everyone has to write. So we create paragraph and sentence frames. So again, that goes back to having the differentiation pieces for the struggling readers that really help them to start modeling and being successful in writing.
And the lady in the front had a question.
I just have a question about what Mr. Sivon was saying about the state testing not connected correlating with this testing. Do you think this testing is more successful because you are the same company producing the product and testing? Where the state testing is more broad, and at every single school using the same exact material, and it being tested?
And, well, I think some of it, I think what you hit on there is that when you look at state testing, there is more being tested, right? So when you're looking at what are intentions and what we do well, it's really about getting students to accelerate their literacy levels to, when you look at depth of knowledge, right? How deep are we making inferences? Are we just scratching the surface and figuring out the main idea? How do you get your tests and your content to match up? Not every single fifth grader's using the same social, the same science book, and integrating the test with that product.
I just...
So your, your product and your test are created... Yes, our, our level set up, right. And you have the opportunity with the level set assessment that is in the platform. I mentioned that first-time students log in for back-to-school, they are level set tested as part of the process. We have a mid-year that happens just after, you know, December, January, and then we have a tandem year. So we have three, three lexile measurements that happen, plus that auto-adjust that's happening every month for our students based on their exit scores.
All right.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for spending your time coming and achieving 3000. If anyone that spoke in public input, remember to marinate your name, so she can put that down.
It's the 24th Century SRA. Who remembers SRA?
I do. I do. Okay, three points to the bullying report. Am I going to the principal on the bullying report?
Um, yes, I believe you have a copy of it.
I haven't had, I do not have a copy.
It's an executive copy.
Don't have it. I think I'm gonna get a paper copy. Will I get a paper copy? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Same.
Sure, we'll skip, we'll, we'll come back to the bullying report. You gonna make copy?
Okay.
Uh, band program update?
Band program update, um, I didn't have anything ready for you, but what, uh, in talking to Mr. Kirby, I, the direction that we are going to move towards is working with Symphony Music and doing a, um, music instrument rental program. The monthly fee ranges from $5,000 to $3,000, depending on what instrument you have, um, what is a sentence that I have ideas for, uh, work on how to support the families who may have difficulties in their unit. Um, and what I would like to, in a perfect world, do is after vacation, um, roll a program up to existing families, so if they'd like to start bringing an instrument now, um, they can do so. Then we can work with the company for a couple of months, and we're together to get a program for going to next year. We're figuring out how that works.
So my question, and I've asked you this question Friday a few days ago, I should bubble. So you've had the question. So every child that needs and wants a fully functioning instrument is gonna get one?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Good. Any other comments on this, um, band program update? And then we put some money in the budget for it?
Yes, you do.
A couple hundred thousand dollars, when I understand?
Five thousand.
Five thousand. Couple zeros left. Uh, Kim Cannon, is that, is that a half-hand or, it's a full hand, just get it up there.
Um, yeah, so the $5,000, I think, is part of monthly budget. Wasn't that before, or is the monthly fee there as well?
I think that's the level of detail that we can't be able to doubt. Um, what I will definitely do is, is ask the parents, not support their instruments strategically, but the, the families that they can, who are responsible, or who express a need that may be above the line. We can work with them to figure out how to support, um, their ability to, um, get the instrument of their choice. There's a couple of options. I mean, we can look at that, provide, we can work with a family to provide a new instrument, or we will still have some existing instruments that we can go to, to lend to children, um, from existing instruments. Less of them may be being used by that one. The benefit of their own is that if your girl's going to go and continue playing an instrument in high school, that will be an instrument, that will be an investment that you will be able to carry on. Now, us having some instruments set, for the kid who doesn't really know what instrument they wanna play, they can try two or three or four instruments before they may have what they want. So I think it will give us some flexibility to think about what to put with people. Um, we just gotta kind of look at the details of how to target who may be in need, or how may that work.
Are you skeptical?
Um, I mean, so it's gonna be, so that's for the nine months that they're in school monthly, and then if they want to pay extra, it'd be for summer as well.
Is the, the contract, it's a contract with Symphony, so I believe that it's, um, that it ends up being open for school year, so you wanna, like, it's, it's a rental. Um, so you, the, the instruments would stay where they are.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to grab a minute. $30 a month for nine months, or $30 a month for 12?
I believe it's 12.
So that's a decent amount of money. You got two kids in the band, or, I mean, I think we talked a little bit off on about if there would be possible for parents to, you know, all of this, but maybe some fundraising, you know, like booster rooms, a club or something. I'm afraid that it's gonna be complicated to...
So two kids, it's 720 bucks to have your kid have an instrument? Is that what we're saying? We can't do any better than that? And, and the reason why is because of the condition of this program where we find it? That we're in this position?
Uh, well, I'm honestly, I can see having a hybrid of a whole bunch of different, you know, of, of different scenarios, where some, that there might be some kids that are using some pre-existing, some instruments that exist at Lobo, whereas other people are, are working on the, the rent to own. Um, and, and I think we just end up working with every family to figure out what's the best fit there. And it might, I think it's gonna look different in every situation. So I, I think it's gonna be, I'm not sure it's gonna be practical to come with one absolute model, as much as being able to work with everybody where they are to, um...
Well, there'll be, I don't know, I'm just being altruistic on that, but is, is there a, a certain point where this school has an abundance of instruments and nobody has to pay anything? Or are those days gone in schools?
I, I think those days are gone. We find out until the summer that some of the instruments have moved from them, some of them are just not functioning well. Some were fixed, some, um, but it, it is the only school I know of that, you know, there, there were no rental programs in the past or present. And so I think the LCF somehow 15 years ago, the burden for, not purchasing per se, but upkeep of Lobo's instruments, was, uh, it was, it was the responsibility of the LCF which is unacceptable. And so we did, we're shifting it to the school. I asked Mr. Kirby to give me a figure, and he gave me $5,000 figure, and he had sort of sussed out, um, why that figure would work. Um, you have my word, parents and the community, that no student will be without an instrument. No student who wants to play an instrument or explore various instruments will not be able to do so. You have my word, they will all be able to participate in any which way they, they wish.
Negative pays for it monthly, though?
We may have some. We, we are expecting some instruments. Ownership will be on our side, upkeep will be on our side for families in need.
And one of the benefits of going with a company like Symphony is they'll come in on a regular basis and do a instrument tune-up. So it may help the, I mean, we've got a fairly small program, so like, up every week, but maybe a couple of times a month, they come in and do the maintenance on the instruments and stuff like that. So that's all part of that piece. So there's some benefits to it.
They're on site, they're, they're, sometimes they'll take an instrument, bring it back, fixed and cleaned, and so...
Are there any grants we can write to?
Well, we could still go to the LCF for those sort of extras, but certainly not what our operating, operating budget should be bearing. They were bearing a load, I would say, pretty much 100%. Uh, you know, how that happened, I don't know, about 15, 16 years ago. But it came to our attention when Mr. Kirby started, and, um, we're ending it. Not sustainable.
Um, so since I've been coming to these meetings over the last four months, you know, I have heard of the, um, you know, means does not stop a student from being able to go on a field trip, means does not stop a student from being able to participate in band. So how is that something that has communicated to families so that, you know, or I in that situation, I'm like, I can afford $720 times two kids to be able to do that, so that I know that I can approach either Sonia or Lori and say, you know, listen, how do I even start that process?
So 720 is for two kids, just a...
Okay, yep.
And your question is, how do you find out what?
How, how do our families know that means does not mean to stop them from participating in these various things? Like, there's the, the safety net for field trips. There's this, we can work on you, we'll work on things with you for the, um, instruments. How is that communicated?
So if you, if someone, the parent has listened to the means, and they don't, they just keep their kid home, and they don't put them in the band, or they don't send them on a field trip, they just sit in their house with their door shut, is that what you mean?
Right, like, how, how do those parents might be that, that know...
I would imagine that they would get involved and ask questions, call the school, go to school committee meetings, and, and be a, a partner.
We would clearly, uh, clearly articulate that to the students and to families in different, um, different decades. I mean, um...
And the informational, informational materials. And I have to say, our families are very comfortable, um, reaching out to our counselor's social worker. Island Moving Company. We had several students on scholarship. They did not pay for a full year. And so 20 sessions. How did we know who those students were on the program materials? We made it clear, contact the principal or counselor's social worker, and so we had six young dancers on scholarship.
Got a half a hand, get it up there. There it is.
Just really into that, and I have one more question, but, um, I think Mr. Kirby probably, I don't know, enthusiasm and hope for getting better instruments, it's not even on the kids that, so they moved his mom, so my kids started homeschooling, that they're not paying extra money. So if I was getting out there without sort of a full story, it'd be...
That's not good.
Um, and the second thing, I'm just wondering what the stock gap is for remaining, like, four and a half months from now through the end year, or like, is it still playing with this broken, and, you know?
Well, I honestly think that if we, if we can bring Symphony and start to work with them now, I think if we could, if even a dozen people choose to start the rental process now, that would free up instruments and allow us to, to take off on some of the instruments that aren't working so well. So I think if we, like, can begin the process now, that might help us get to a better place. It sounds like...
I think we are moving now.
Well, I think, I think what happened, there was a tipping point, you know, that sort of critical mass of instruments that were old, worn, and dirty. And, just, you know, you and I have spoken about this before. Um, you weren't aware of it, we didn't stay ahead of it. Um, we dropped the ball. School dropped the ball, you know, along the line. And Principal Rip and I are picking it up. And Mr. Kirby's, his enthusiasm, obviously, is what brought all the information to us. He was so thorough, and he came in last summer and looked around, and, um, I, I'd never had any reports coming across my desk or email regarding our instruments, um, the condition of them, instrumentation, the types, never, until we started. So we're aware of it now, and we do agree, we need to pick up those operating costs, not our wonderful LCF. We'll go to you for extras.
I think it's a start. Maybe we can continue trying to get some better ideas of trying to get it straightened out immediately. So, any other questions on that? I'll go back to bullying report, we have it here. Bullying report, the purpose of the report, I just read, the school principal director, head of schools, your superintendent, school committee, and our school governing board, the summary report of incidents, responses, and any other bullying related issues, at least twice annually pursuant to Rhode Island's statewide bullying policy. So this is our first report of the year. Um, is this public, John?
Yes.
This document's public, right?
Sure.
Yeah. So if anybody wants to look at the bullying report, uh, the first one that's, that, uh, is given to the school committee, it'll be here. Uh, any questions, uh, from the committee on bullying report? Okay. Thank you. All right, we did band program. Superintendent report, update on front office and, I don't like saying gymatorium, which bugs me.
Well, it is the name.
Update on front office and gym renovation.
Gymatorium. Um, that is architect speak. Next week, we have, um, Martone Construction coming in and wrapping everything up. On Monday, they will do the pre-start of our HVAC system, and on Wednesday, they will do the factory starter. So that is, it's go time for air conditioning in the gym, in the gymatorium. And so we're not quite ready to move into our office space. We are, the end of the access control is being updated there. Uh, one door was added, a few, two doors added. And we also have to shift our video surveillance system back into the main office, and our lobby guard kiosk back into the main office. So hopefully, after February break, Martone will be gone, and our IT guy will be in there, bringing in everything that is in Carolyn Sedwick's office right now. Uh, her HR office has been our temporary main office, it has worked out well. Uh, she has been grinning and bearing it, but she will be very happy to see us. Bye-bye.
Any questions on the renovation? Thank you, not soon. Thank you, Superintendent, for your hard work. Finance report.
We have the, um, financial report for the seven months ended January 31st, and we are projecting a small surplus. Now, we have to consider that in that surplus, we also have replacement of the boiler, that was $48,000, and, uh, we also have some furniture acquisitions for the, uh, for the front office too. So some of the savings that we're able to make on the tuition side, especially across the high school, that will go into, uh, for the first phase of the boiler replacement. And, uh, so, uh, I'm glad to say that we're still at around a break, able to show a small surplus at this point in time. Hopefully, we can maintain that.
Oh, breathing, that's good. Both were. Questions on the finances? Thank you. Committee reports, for the school committee, the liaison.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
At a recent meeting, the accountability scores were reviewed, those, that's the RIDE star ratings. I think we're going to have a conversation about that here soon, too.
Yep, I think I sent you on Friday night. No, I'm sorry, Sunday, because I was tree down.
They, so, so they were concerned about their middle school scores as well, because they were at a three, the other scores were at four, but, so we're not the only ones struggling, but they're very concerned. And they also are very much about their capital improvement project, their five-year plan, lots of discussions, some contentious debate actually over the spending of tax dollars on the school improvement plans. So that was very interesting.
Is that the one I've been reading about, $24 million?
Yeah, they're in stage two in their RIDE application and, yeah.
Was there any discussion about their teacher contracts? Because I know they don't have a contract for teachers, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, nothing definitive.
Nothing. Thank you. Town Recreation Committee Liaison Report, there's nothing to report. Health and Wellness, Jenna?
We have a meeting on the 27th. I'll know more then, but recess rocks is going well. Equipment's being ordered. The staff that attended, the professional development have all been signed up for an online program to increase the resources for recess. And I hear there's a little wellness week coming up.
Mm-hmm.
And children are going to dress according to color of a theme.
Yep, vegetables and...
Which is pretty cool.
Once it's flushed out, I will share with you more.
Now we're having moved to... Well, that's a stand.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee, Ed, I think we'll wait till we get down to action.
Sure.
Oasis Principal.
We're just ending our dormant season and I expect to get into the spring cleanup report.
Thank you. School Safety Subcommittee, nothing to report on that. Social Emotional Learning Committee Report, did I go to you on that one?
Yeah, we have actively met a couple of times. Had some, a lot of dialogue back and forth about the newness of the school. One of the pieces that I started to work on, that I would share out with the committee, is looking at the actual social emotional learning curriculum that we have and seeing how that is really helping.
I shared that, I shared that with them, yeah.
It's very much a working document, but also figuring out how we can tie some of the social justice or other groups of pieces in with that to see if there are gaps that need to be addressed. And our restorative practices, we have a restorative practices team that's looking at how to implement within the building. And one of the things that the natural times will be to ensure the fidelity of implementation of social emotional learning programming. And that, the restorative practices team is meeting tomorrow. And a couple of people here want to restore the practices workshop in January, Jen and Jen went. So we're trying to get people, whether we did just the staff members, to, to understand what we're doing and what's going on here.
So do you feel the S E L is a productive given that you feel like it's moving forward from where it's been, where it is now? And do you see a clear, definite?
Definitely have more work to do, but I think we definitely are up to the challenge.
I'll ask my committee members that are on that committee, do you feel, Sally, should the same question, do you feel it's productive?
So I had, I've experienced one meeting so far and I think we have some work to do. Yeah, I think there's some room for growth and improvement.
Ken?
I would agree with that, but I think there are some good things happening. There was discussion at the last meeting about trying to assess teachers' comfort level with different topics and what their strengths are so they can be a resource to other teachers and what their areas of growth are so that we can help them grow in this area.
So it's a big deal to me, since I've been reading about it and trying to research it. Certainly not an expert, but it just seems common sense that, you know, these teachers are on the front lines here, these administrators are on the front lines with these, with these kids that are going through all these things. And if they need, you know, some more help or more programming or more study on it, then we should offer that to them, you know? Maybe there's some teachers say, you know, I'm fine, you know, I've got all this schooling and I've done all these things, I don't need any help. I mean, that's fine. Maybe there's four teachers that need it. But I think we should offer it or investigate it, look into it. I think it'd be good. Polly, I know your own.
I love Social Emotional Learning Committee. I think they're doing a great job with social emotional issues. Going into the meeting, we had a charge from you. One was about the teachers and the other one was about our diversity education.
And the undergrads.
The undergrads. So after sitting and listening, I kind of had this thought that that is not where that question really sits. Social emotional team is doing a great job with social emotional stuff and, but I don't think in my own head that that ties into curriculum, the curriculum that we're teaching around race and culture and ethnicity and all of that. I believe that is a curriculum issue and not a social emotional learning issue. And I think that is beyond that committee's scope of work.
Any other comments?
Well, it's a good point. But it's all connected. It's all connected.
It is, but to Patrick's question of whether or not there's diversity education going on, the, I don't see how the Social Emotional Learning Committee is connected to the actual curriculum pieces. I, you know, I understand how they deal with kids and their feelings and emotions around diversity and racism and all that, but they're not in charge of deciding whether or not we're teaching civil rights in fifth grade or not. And I, I believe that was his question.
Any other comments? All right, let's see, thanks. Discussion items, I don't see any, nothing to discuss, I guess, tonight. I have public input, which is here on the agenda, but you can also raise your hand anytime, but this is your official, I'll have an official hand, go ahead.
I've asked this question before, and I'm going to ask it again. Is cursive handwriting taught here at the local?
Yes.
Is cursive writing? Good.
Wow, is that new?
No. That is good. Pre-takes last, yeah.
Wow, that's good. Publicity of input, just Richard. Action, consider discuss a vote to approve the shared services agreement for 2020. Superintendent?
Table.
What's the status on that?
We are still waiting for the town side to finish their demandations, Mr. Moore, to provide some feedback. And we haven't had an opportunity, they haven't been available to meet with us, so we're looking for a date.
Do you want to just quickly explain it to the cameras so everybody knows what it is? Just quickly.
Sure, Roger.
Get it now, so I can, good stuff.
The shared service agreement, shared services agreement, well, one of those shared services is sitting right here. The IT Director, the informational instructional technology director, they're called, it's in different districts, he is also shared with the town. He provisions the safety complex, our fire and police, with all tech support, tech purchases, tech upgrades, tech checks, everything. And everything is high-tech there. They are a law enforcement and rescue safety function. He, so we share that service with the town. He's not just the school's IT Director. Also, the town's part-time maintenance director is shared with the school. That is Mr. Moore, who currently holds that position. He works, I believe, one-fifth, so for us, one-fifth of the week or so. And I think he's only two-fifths in town. And he is responsible for not the custodial work here, but the maintenance work, painting, boilers, oh gosh, the water delivery system, pieces of it, plowing, let's see, roof issues, you know, anything that does, that falls outside of the scope of custodial work. So we do have a shared services agreement that was codified about a year and a half ago, it was just a verbal agreement in the past. We codified it with the help of our attorney. And in the agreement, it's a memorandum of understanding between the town and the school department. In that M O A, that memorandum of understanding, one of the articles said that we must revisit it yearly. And that's what this is all about. We are in the yearly revision process and we just haven't had a chance to, I made my revisions, the town made their revisions, and we're not in an impasse, we just haven't had a chance to sit down and discuss them.
That was perfect, thank you.
Please table.
That was per, that was perfect. I hope everybody understood that. And what I want to highlight, this was always a handshake deal, so no one ever knew what anyone was doing, it was always, wow, what's going on? So we codified it, we put it down on paper, every year we look at it. And so this is a good process. So, you know, every year it changes, you know? And so we wrote it, now they're looking at it, maybe they're not so happy with a couple of things, or we're not so happy, but it's a great process. So it's not just out in the air there where everyone's wondering, so everyone can see it, it's a public document, we're good. Thank you for that.
And it saved the town money.
It's a money saver.
Yeah, we're sharing services.
Thank you. Nine-two, consider discussing vote on videography, photography and audio recording policy amendments. This is the second read, Ed.
So we, the school has cameras, the school soon will have even more cameras. This policy was put into place, it clarifies the status of the information that's collected and the procedures and conditions under which that can be released.
Has that been amended?
Has it been amended? We haven't yet enacted it.
This is, this is a brand.
Between the first and second reads, there have been no changes.
This has existed.
This, well, it will be, if we...
This is the first time you've ever had it.
If we vote to approve it tonight, it will be existing.
Got you. Some emotion?
Some.
Second?
Second.
Any other further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll see. Nine-three, consider discussing vote on technology policy amendment, this is a second read also.
It is the paragraph that if you scroll down, that is in bold, it just acknowledges, it's being transparent that we, just as a, in the way of operational necessity, I guess is the way that it was phrased, do collect certain information when students are using technology as simple, innocuous as IP addresses and things. And so this just acknowledges that, that fact.
Consider a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I'll see any. The next one's a first read, no vote. Consider discussing vote on attendance amendments. Ed?
This is to replace the present insufficient attendance policy that we have. We had, we met this afternoon, it was very much a workshop, and so much of this was put together this afternoon. I'm not sure that, it differs substantially, but it does clarify an awful lot of things that were just absent in the, in the former policy, or what is, at the moment, the present policy at least, until this one gets to be adopted.
So the black is the?
Uh, black isn't necessarily, the whole of this, Mrs. Whip put together the great majority of this. And it expands considerably on, there's virtually, there's essentially one paragraph in this policy regarding family trips, pretty much is the only one that carried over, that would carry over from what we have now.
So my experience, living here for 50 years, and going to school here and having kids here, is this town likes to go on vacation during school, likes to take their kids out of school to go skiing or go to the beach or get a new dog, I don't know. And I guess that's not good to, for educating your child if they're not at school. So it seems like we're flexing our muscles a little bit here and you're getting a little tired. Are you seeing a dip in attendance here? Is it still that same way as when I was around? Principal Whip?
Yes, it is.
It is. I mean, it is, if you look at, RIDE has attendance data that they post on a daily basis now. We're, we're certainly not at the very top of having the best attendance, but we're nowhere near having the worst attendance in the state. We're probably in the top third. I think, I think what I looked at it this morning, like 82nd out of 267 students. The best for students is to be in school, to be able to, to access the education that we have to offer. So we want to improve the attendance as much as we possibly can. And actually, this, the other, the old policy was more punitive in nature and was assigning kids detention for being out of school. This is more putting together an intervention plan and working with them to put together a plan in place to figure out what is going to be caused and figure out how to get them here. So I think this is much more realistic in line with what we're doing.
I'll be interested to see if the number gets better. It's too bad, you know, if the parents, you know, get upset and they want results and you get your kid in school, they don't help them.
We only ask for 180 days, not even half the days in the county year.
So any time we can get on the parents, we might as well do it, right? Thanks. Oh, I got a hand.
What's the rationale for providing this work only after the school year? That was existing, you think, the old policy?
I actually know the theory behind it because I asked four years ago or whenever, and it was that oftentimes teachers would take a lot of time putting packets together for kids to go on vacation and they wouldn't do them and they would lose them and the teachers would have to do it again when the kids came back. That was, that was the reasoning then. I know from experience as a man who takes their child out of school for vacations, that if your child is nice and polite and a good student, that teachers will often say, well, you could always read chapter three is what we're going to be covering and, you know, we always do this vocabulary, you know, that teachers will hint or even maybe help the student prepare for their vacation. I don't know.
Can I ask you a question? Any other questions on attendance? No, thanks. All right, nine-five, consider discussing vote on home instruction policies, again, it's a first read. Ed?
The, having yet another go at the home instruction policy, these are more language tweaks. I know we just had a second read for this policy at the last meeting, and so these are some procedural tweaks and clarifications.
Any questions on this one? Okay, nine-six, again, first read, consider discussing vote.
Can we go back to the question?
Sure.
Can we save the editor?
Sure.
Be happy to give you.
I'm sorry, this is you guys, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We're gonna hang that little problem, this is more fun.
I'm sorry.
There were, oh, thank you.
All the time, you.
Again, this was very much a workshop meeting that we had and we had two policies that were actively being drafted within the limited hour window that we had. And Mariah rose to it, but it was impossible to get it all, so, but I think that we have, actually, it appears as though you did.
She did.
Wow.
Awesome.
So I think it's everything that was discussed.
The first reading was at mostly the recording, the parents recording what we've done at the edge of the home instruction.
I think we landed on June.
So, so in June, you're looking for the letter of intent? Or I thought we were giving the end of the year?
I think both. I think, did we think that that would be the perfect opportunity?
You know, some people do student, some people would send them separately, some would say, well, I'm not sure, I'll just come in August, it's not coming. The only thing that I thought that we talked about, we spent this. We had dinner. Is this second portion, it's very repetitive of the first. So one is the policy and then we do the policy. It talks about the letter intent. It talks about review of the question. It talks about all those things, but that's more like a checklist for you guys than for what we, what schools are expecting to do. Am I correct?
I, is there, are you suggesting edits of substance? Because I'm, I don't, I don't wish to, I think that we have devoted more attention to this to, to be demanding stylistic tweaks, I think, is.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to make this, this is clear and there's confusion that people are saying, okay, this is what I do, I go all step one through, six. And then, which is that's one, those are all great. And then they go to another page and they have another one through six, which.
Well, I think one is policy and one is procedure. So I think the procedure piece encapsulates.
That makes sense. So that's more like a checklist of all of this, which is, which is never seen.
Like a cheat sheet.
Put together that. Never seen this. It's just redundant and I.
As the superintendent pointed out, she distinguished between a policy and a procedure. So to the extent that that's the case, there is a distinction and it's not redundant.
Anything else on?
That was it. Thank you. I'm sorry.
You can take any time you want. No problem. See you ladies. Thanks for all you do. Consider discuss and vote on professional, this is again a first read on.
I would ask that we table that. Unfortunately, the workshop period didn't allow for that to get covered.
All right, so consider discuss a vote to approve any request for information administration in a lead council. Anyone have any requests that are going to cost us mine? Don't see any. Consider and vote to enter into executive session under RGL section 42465A1. RGL section 42465A1 be a roll call. I have to read something before we do a roll call. Please note that any person who has discussed an executive session has been notified and written in advance of this meeting has been given the opportunity to have such discussion in open session pursuant to RGL section 42465A1. We can do a roll call now. David? Can we do it here, John? Executive session. Do the roll call upstairs.
Ed Bowen?
Aye.
Pollyanna?
Aye.
Jen? Rita Kennedy?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.